August 24th, 2021, Select Board meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
You are welcome.
Chairman Dede.
I guess we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Chairman, who can...
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is public comment. If anyone looks like they'll be online has public comment, please state your name and address for the record. Anyone? Is anybody waving?
Nobody waving.
Somebody waving?
I don't know, maybe some's...
Someone coming through the door. We'll give it a minute and just see if it's a talk opportunity. Good evening. I'm on public comment. Do you have anything you'd like to say? Okay. Thank you. All right. So first off, I'm in school, public comment. Tom, Tom, Chris Pratt and LPP program issues with Southfield. Is Southfield on?
Mr. Donnelly, I believe, is here.
Right, town attorney.
Hello, sir. How are you?
I'm good. Thanks for having me tonight. I appreciate it being able to participate in the discussion.
Can you hear us okay? We coming through all right?
I can hear you great. Yep. How about me?
Yep, you're fine. Appreciate that.
Yep, Chris Pratt.
Chris is there. Dennis Clark.
Chris, can you unmute? So can you hear us, Chris?
Yes, I can.
You sound good, Chris.
I felt better, that's for sure.
All right. So first up, I guess we're just going to discuss the love letter that was sent, is my understanding, correct? That's where we're at. I noticed it looks like we had a few more people sign up. Sir, I'm not sure if you're aware, but it says that 22, they received 22 applications for the monetary total of all applications for 2021, $3,950. So it looks like, even though I'm not thrilled with the letter they sent, it did spark an interest in some folks coming down, I should be staring at the camera, coming down and getting their stuff cleaned up there. I don't think our intent, at least this board, was to find anybody. It's unfortunate that that language was in there, but it looks like it did spark a few people's interest. Chris, any thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, the LMC had gone out and done a survey, and they had found a lot of violators, and I guess a lot of them were repeat violators. So I think part of the commission's idea was to get that interest for them to come forward, you know?
Yeah.
I don't think the finding thing was totally necessary, but, you know, letters do go out in February at the beginning of the year to let people know that they need to register their docks and boats.
Oh.
And then it's also sent out again later on in the spring. So the seven day thing, I don't see as a, almost like a non-issue because it's February, you know, since they were notified. So I don't think it was a short-term turnaround as far as that goes. But, you know, it is expensive for us to send out fines. It's not usually something that we like to do. See, it did spark an interest. We felt that since the LMC did do all their due diligence and researching, that we kind of owed them the, that mostly.
Mr. Moevan, any thoughts?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Donnelly.
Mr. Donnelly.
Sure. Well, again, thank you for having me, and for those of you who weren't sort of part of the conversation, Melissa Mack, the first selectman, wasn't able to attend tonight. I drew the short straw, so I am here in her place. But also, you know, importantly, I had worked on the sort of, we call it a payment in lieu of fees agreement back in 2019. And just to give a little background for everybody, just so everyone's clear what Southfield's understanding of that was, you know, at the time, you know, I think the LPP has been around for about 15 years or so. You know, historically, there had been some, you know, trouble with compliance, some trouble with collecting the fees, and we had some conversations, you know, with residents who were, who had been getting, getting letters and also, you know, with the town of Southwick, just about making sure that we were doing our part when it came to the lake, you know? And our understanding of the LPP was really to help fund, you know, public safety and conservation efforts on the lake. And certainly, you know, there's a recognition by the town of Southfield, and there was with the Board of Selectmen when they approved this agreement, that Southwick does provide some great services on the lake to Southfield residents. So, you know, we come at that, we come at this entire process from that. You know, and in the past, there's been some disagreements between, you know, individual residents of Southfield and people have tried to get the Attorney Generals involved in trying to understand, you know, whose responsibility is what and where the lake ends and, you know, why their attorney tells them their deed goes into, you know, 12 feet into the water and all sorts of things like that. And ultimately, we felt that the most collaborative approach that we could take from the Board of Selectmen side in Southfield was to come up with an agreement, make sure that there was some payment to Southwick every year, and we negotiated an amount where I think this year it was $2,400 that, that Southfield paid promptly in July to make sure that, you know, we were recognizing the efforts that your town is taking for our residents on the lake. So, you know, we came at it from that. But, you know, part of the understanding too was that, you know, okay, look, we're going to make this payment and, and, you know, our folks are not going to get letters about what they're, what they're doing and things like that. So, you know, I watched the Conservation Commission's meeting, and I understand they were looking at this as a, as a, as a fine and not the fee, and, you know, those things are different. You know, I understand where they came from on this, but, you know, it did spark quite a bit of concern among Southfield residents who thought, you know, that this issue was sort of put to bed. Now, from our perspective, if, you know, and like I said, I did watch the Conservation Commission's meeting, if it's necessary to get some registration done and some inventorying done so that, you know, public safety issues can be addressed promptly and swiftly, I mean, certainly that is a goal that we would share, you know, with, with the town of Southwick, and we would love to work together with you in order to do that. But what we'd like to avoid is a situation where we have, you know, 30 angry residents are calling the first selectman's office on a Tuesday morning and us having to argue about something that I think we can work together on to achieve a common goal. So, you know, I'm certainly happy to participate in that discussion and see what we can, we can come out of this, perhaps with some, some agreement moving forward.
Derek, I think that'd be great. I mean, I think that's something that we are looking forward to as a Conservation Commission. That is our goal, the safety on the lake, making sure that docks are put in correctly as far as conservation concerns are met. And those are the, those are the things that I'm coming at from when people don't register their docks, they, we don't know where they are, we're not sure if they're sticking out too far into the water, you know? Things like that are the things that we are concerned about. It's not the money. That's, you know, the money is, you know, it does go towards great things, don't get me wrong, and it is very well appreciated, but the other things are more of concern to Conservation Commission. So I think we can come at it from that direction would be great.
Yeah, excellent. And, and again, you know, we share those concerns, in particular from a, you know, from a public safety standpoint. I mean, Southfield emergency responders are usually the secondary call on most lake emergencies. It doesn't mean that sometimes they're not, they're not first, but, you know, I think we all know and can appreciate how dangerous the lake really is, you know, and there are accidental drownings all year long or near accidental drownings all year long, no, you know, no multiple people through the ice in the winter, and, you know, I think we all, we all know some of the concerns that we've seen out there. So, you know, we certainly share those concerns, and so I guess my question, both for you, Mr. Pratt, and for the board here is just how would you like us to proceed with that? You know, from our perspective, I'd love to be able to, to have the first selectman get some correspondence out to, to the folks who received letters, so, you know, if those lists could be shared and we could reach out to them, you know, and maybe we can have a working group established that can talk about how to, you know, get together in the next week or two and figure out how to get this information to you and quickly so we can move forward with those goals.
I believe that'll be amenable just to, to get that discussion going forward as far as the fines go, I'm not too concerned about. We can put that on hold and delay, you know, until we get things ironed out, maybe get them resolved altogether or absolved. Dennis, do you have anything you'd like to say? I mean, Dennis is the one who's been coordinating the Conservation Commission for the last 20 years, and he's really been our, our point man. He has recently left, and so in lieu of him, this is really where this has come about.
I thought that was a lifetime appointment. How did he get...
Well, he's kind of stuck there right now. He's in limbo, so.
I feel bad. I don't think that the letter was necessary. We've been trying to avoid this kind of situation for years now. We've been working together. We had a great thing going. I didn't see any reason for a heavy-handed approach, and I apologize. I think the commission took some advice from the Lake Management Committee that they probably should have thought twice about, because every time I'd make a move, I would make sure I'd consult with somebody in Southfield to make sure we don't do, we don't want to do this. This is exactly what we didn't want to happen because, you know, trying to push people like that is not a good way to get things accomplished. We've been trying to work with you guys, and I apologize that this even happened. And if there's something the commission can do to make it better, you let us know, and, you know, we will do that also. But once again, I wasn't consulted on this or I would have advised against it.
Well, you know, that's certainly much appreciated, and like I said, I mean, I think we can, we can really have some conversations, you know, pretty swiftly and moving forward. Just let us know how you'd like to do that, so, you know, we can get to the goals of this and, you know, and do it in a way, working together and continuing our good relationship there.
Great. Sounds good.
Chairman, I think, you know, this, this agreement from 2019, if I remember right, 18, sorry, 2018, you know, I think it was a great first step, and it's really two parts, right? So the first part was the elimination of having Massachusetts trying to, and Southwick trying to collect fees from the residents of Southfield. Southfield recognizing the contribution that Southwick makes under the LPP for lake safety and enforcement on the lakes. And then the other part of it, the other half, which the agreement really doesn't cover per se, is the collection of the data. So I think we have to continue to work with the first selectman's office in Southfield and other parties in Southfield to basically cajole the folks in Southfield to get us the data. They don't have to pay us, they just have to get us the data we need. So it's very important that we have it from a safety standpoint and, and compliance with our own LPP.
State regs.
And the state regs, because the...
Delicated agreement.
Correct. You know, the chapter 91 process is way more arduous than the LPP process, and no one wants to go under that if they don't have to. So with, you know, all that was said, I appreciate the feedback from the, from the Conservation Commission, and, you know, we'll get back with the Select and Mac, but, you know, we need to emphasize how important that, to get that data is and, you know, the registrations and stuff for the, for the docks and boats and vessels so that we can, you know, continue to maintain safety on the lake. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it was a great suggestion by Attorney Donnelly, the formerly working group, and I think we should probably start working on that immediately. I'm looking forward to Select and Moevan, who's played a very large part in this, and I don't know if he has the time to help coordinate that.
I certainly will make the time to do that.
All right. I would suggest Attorney Donnelly, if you could work with Select and Moevan, and I don't know if the harbor master is here tonight, I would like to be involved.
Put that hat on.
Put that hat on. If we could have somebody from Lake Management, somebody from Conservation, and whoever Attorney Donnelly wants from our sister community of Southfield, Connecticut, I think it'd be great, but I'd like to have the group formed within two weeks. I think we're all set. Okay. I think Attorney Donnelly, we're going to send over tomorrow the list of everyone that did not fill out those forms. We did a little rush, which was great, but there's still several that haven't, and then you can hand that off to your first selectman, and she'll have a beautiful list to start making phone calls with. And it might be just that simple, right?
Very good. That'll be great. So, but I appreciate, again, the opportunity to be here and having the discussion. I appreciate the folks from Conservation being on as well. So thank you so much and look forward to working with you further on this.
Same here.
And also, please remind Select and Mac, first Select and Mac, about our mutual joint participation in our mutual 350 and 250 grades that are coming up shortly.
I will. I will certainly do that as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Dennis. Good to see you, Dennis.
Have a good night.
Good night, guys.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, 5:30, School District, COVID-19 CARES Act Fund Award. Who's award? While back, must be you, I started. Where did you guys come in front of us? At least eight, eight months ago.
Eight months, fall.
Yeah, fall time. So we did apply on behalf of the school. I believe we got $37?
It was $36.50, but we rounded up.
We rounded up for $37.
Which is funny, because then they use their extra money to, for almost the same amount to lower the assessment to us, and we appreciate that too.
And we appreciate it.
$37?
$37.
She went for $40.
You can open up and look at the amount.
Mr. Moevan, since you're the clerk, you're good with numbers, you can tell us what the check is for.
$89,720, remaining to 52 cents.
And this is from the CARES funds that were awarded to the state of Massachusetts that were then distributed to different towns like ours, and it's within our allocation of CARES funds to take care of the school district, which is a permissible thing. And they use this to supplement their efforts to buy and equip all of their COVID-19 response equipment, devices, cleaning stuff, masks, things of that nature. And this is Southwick's chair of the three-member communities. Now, I'm not sure if the others have sent their checks to you.
Before Mr. Fox asks that question.
He's going to ask that question.
He's just, I just want to, you know, speed up that.
This just came in within the last two weeks.
Right. And it sounds like you're back to mask over there? What did the state say?
The Board of Education voted this morning, nine to one, to give Commissioner Riley the approval to mandate masks. He hasn't released anything yet, and as soon as he does, we will release it to our parents.
Right. And how do we get out of that?
You can't.
No, if you had said if...
Oh, if you reach 80, on October 1st, if you reach an 80% vaccination rate, those who are vaccinated would not have to wear a mask to school in grade seven through 12.
Wow. So what do you think, where now for percentage?
For students and staff?
Yeah.
I would say combined with probably about 40%, maybe a little bit lower.
Because the 12 and unders can't get vaccinated anyway.
No, I'm talking seven through 12.
Oh, really? Seven through 12.
We don't have a real high vaccination rate. Most are students.
Hold on. Hold on.
Got it? You. Yeah, this one gets the ball. Make sure you're voting, 96, 12, 55. All right. Looks like you're happy. Go this way. First one.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Should we move up on our agenda while the, while the superintendent is here?
Yep.
That discussion item around the Southwick Collin Grandville Regional School District member vacancies.
Oh, yes. There's a vacancy.
There's enough vacancies.
What would you like to discuss?
I don't know. Is it the same process again, or can we get back in the pool of candidates that already applied since it was only, what, an hour ago that we did that appointment?
I know. That would be great, but I don't know.
I don't know if you can. I believe by statute, you have to readvertise.
I believe so.
Okay. So we're going to readvertise.
Is there a vote of that effect?
And we will, we got here in a few weeks.
Yeah, I don't think. I'll make a motion that we contact the Southville Regional School. Yep. And begin the process of advertising for the vacancy of a Southwick representative. And that I'm going to suggest that we do it before the end of September.
That would be great. That'd be awesome.
Second.
All right. All those in favor? JBD, I. Russ Fox, I.
Doug Moevan, I.
Mr. Chairman. It's the, since we're on this topic, I'd like to ask the board to recognize Mr. Hoop... Oh, yeah, Jeff, for his years of service. It has been, I think he's been a great guy.
Yeah.
And it was a pleasure working with him, and numerous times I'd called him and he'd reach out to the superintendent, and we would resolve issues for the citizens of the town council. So I'd like a letter or a certificate of appreciation.
Yep. We're working on it, because these are what we're hearing right now.
That would be great.
Because he deserves it.
He really does.
Yes. It's going to be big shoes to fill.
Yep. Good guy.
Yes. Would really care about it.
He was also on Capital Expenditure Planning Committee.
Right.
With Joe and I.
Yep.
And the others.
That's right. Too bad. I was a very good person that...
Worked in this, I mean, we understand that.
It's taken a solid difference. Or perhaps.
Oh, yes, it has.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for your generous offer last year with your COVID CARES Act funds. We really appreciate it. And as always, I say, we have worked together, all here for the same people and the same stakeholders, so we work, so we do things together.
Absolutely. And there's been a huge difference. I mean, at least with this board. You know, we don't like what we say all the time, but at least we can say it. No, but it's true. No, like, the door's always open and we do a handshake.
Thank you. I appreciate it as well.
When does school go back?
You go back next Wednesday, the students, and then the teachers return on Monday.
Right. Yeah. So when do I close? Next Wednesday, because I lose all my kids. I tried telling them, I had four or five asked if I could just quit school, but they said no.
You need to know.
Told them, I got them on this file.
Time to change.
Look at us now.
Look at us now. Yeah. Last clown. 1984. All right. Well, thank you.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Good night. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Yep. I'll have this brought over to Stephen tomorrow.
That would be great. Thank you.
I got School District, 55, a few minutes ahead of schedule. Chief of Police regarding drone policy, MOA with Sheriff's Office for the Marine Patrol, and ACL facility use, MOA with West Springfield. Come on in. Yeah, come on up. Just by the state to the left of the owl, I don't know if it's back. Doesn't like that.
Does that one fly?
Oh, look at that. Now look at you. Look at here.
The drone might fly.
There's almost the sun behind you.
The drone's going to pick the owl and fly it around the room.
All right. Sir, what's up today? What do you want to talk about today? Well, so what's the first thing on your list? The drone?
Drone.
So what you have before you is a policy we adopted. It's kind of mirrors Westfield's. And it reminds you of the budget of the drone this year. Well, what happened was, before Chief Bishop left, we had a kind of last-minute opportunity from Westfield as they were buying a new one, and they, the chief reached out to Kevin, and for whatever reason, they weren't happy with the, whatever deal they were going to get for, for the trade, so they offered him something extremely reasonable. I think it was a tune of around $5,000 for a $15,000 piece of equipment. So because of some monies that weren't expected because of, expended because of COVID that we couldn't have for some things, he was able to source through some stuff, and we were able, last minute before they did their transaction, made the purchase, and had some training money available. So Mark Siegel and Andy Smith went to Connecticut for two days and took some really intensive course of instruction, and now they're preparing to take their FAA pilot exams, and they should have those by the end of September, and we'll be up and running with the program. So at very, very minimal cost. So the policy, obviously, I wanted to get that adopted, if possible, prior to then so they can be able to fly, and I'm sure as part of our insurance addition, that needs to be in place as well.
The only thing I noticed, and the policy's fantastic, the only thing I noticed that I think from the Westfield version to what would be our version is there are certain areas of the town of Southwick that fall in the jurisdiction of Bradley International Airport, not the military. I don't know if it was in there. I read it real quick the other night, and I didn't see it.
I believe I had the drone pilots look at it as well.
Yep.
And they thought everything met the standard of the compliance that we need. It's going to be kind of a little bit evolving because the drone standards are continually changing because there's not a lot. And one of the things that's going to be coming up in the future is, I believe it's going to be all drones, is where the airports will actually see them. So there's going to be some software that's, technology that's going to be added to these things, and I believe it even, may as well do a size too, but even for the private sector.
So just, I know, just doing a little research on my own, that there, I think it was quality park of all places is in the...
Bradley?
Class B. You know, there's parts of Southwick that's in the class B.
Yeah, I think we're okay, I can double confirm, but, but Westfield comes out to here quite a bit to practice because of the restrictions they have in Westfield with Barnes so that we're in compliance under this policy, so.
It's awesome. I think it's great. You need a motion from us to...
Yes, I do. And it's up to you if you believe that we can go with it as is, or if you wanted to send it to Town Council for review. We have time, but just depending how quickly they can do it, so what's your call? Are there any licenses required? For us, there is, because we're not private. That's what the FAA piloting licenses were.
So that would, that is complete that.
Yeah, and that's all in the policy too, that they would be FAA, like I say, their, Mark and Andy have been taking several practice tests because it is, it's pretty hard, it's pretty hard, and they're actually doing really well, so they think by the end of the month, with everything else going on of September, they should have that totally done. So there's a fee associated with it, and we send them to Connecticut. I think they might do that Bradley, actually. No, it's just every time we're at the National Municipal Convention, we talk to the drone people, and they tell us, the cost of drone isn't the real cost, it's getting the license and, and keeping it going. Yeah, I mean, really, a lot of our cost is, we were able to absorb it through some of our training funds last year because a lot of training wasn't available anymore, so those line items had some pushing. So when this class came up, it was just like it was down in Connecticut, right around the time we were doing this, and we just took advantage of it and sent them, so we've already incurred a lot of expense. Meaning this moving forward, it's not a lot to them. Really, you know, knock on wood, that, you know, everything Westfield gave us with the addition of batteries and stuff, a lot of things we have, it should be minimal, so that's what we hope for. Just follow. No, you can't follow.
Well, no, I was just wondering, are we going to be able to just use this for police and fire or?
Well, there, it depends on what it is. We would certainly, you know, review what the need is, but you know, there is some issues with regards to being in compliance, what we can do with it versus what a private person can do with it. But I'm quite sure that even for the pilots to continue to get practice hours, that if another entity needed to use it, we would just look at it case by case.
Yeah. Well, you know, one of the other boards that mentioned it were concerned about issues around lakes, you know, breaches and things like that.
Sure.
And for safety reasons, it's not safe for people to get down there.
No.
Areas that.
I would think that would want the ability to bring it out.
Okay.
I guess I want to torture people with it.
So you're the gatekeeper?
Right, yes, we are the gatekeeper.
That's my biggest fear is, some boards and commissions may take.
And again, it comes back to what our policy dictates.
Yeah. I understand. I will make that motion to approve the policy. I will second that motion to approve the policy. All those in favor? Joe Didi, I. Russ Fox, I.
Doug Morgan, I.
Okay, next up.
Sheriff's Office. Okay, so this goes back actually to last year when the sheriff was entertaining the idea of putting a marine unit together. They had reached out to us because they had heard that, you know, we draw lakes, have a dive team. And so in the end, they ended up purchasing a couple boats. They had approached us back in the spring asking if they could, if you would mind them coming out to the lake, that their program is strictly to support us and our endeavor and our lake safety. And certainly, the environmental police has mainly done that for us over the years. Their staffing levels are such where I've talked and talked and talked, and at no fault of theirs, I understand their scenario, but they're just not available, not for what we need. And I would say over the last few years, we've been very good at getting our boat out there during the high traffic times, but it's still, the boat activity is just almost doubled since COVID. And we just need more presence. I mean, it's just like in the road, the more people have out there, the more they can see it, the more they're going to behave and comply to the regulations. So the problem with the sheriff is under Chapter 98, Section 12, which gives us the ability to enforce the violations on the lake. The sheriff does not. The deputy sheriff does not have those powers, does not know the umbrella of the sheriff. Currently, they cannot write these violations. So they can just look for, hopefully, compliance. So the idea is to establish an MOU between us, one that would be specific to the lake only, just to the lake in Southwood. So when they are out there, they would work, you know, as our, as a reserve officer, basically. Kind of, we'd form like a task force. And it would allow them to write the ticket, and there'd have to be some mechanics for how these make it to court. That's just logistics we could figure out. And it just gives us an added resource that we don't have right now. And the sheriff has been very, very committed to this program and the fact that he is solely here to support us. They work for us. If there's a problem with their people, they will address it. They will take on all liability regarding their, you know, employees. And just like our mutual aid agreements that we have with our other communities. And that it is at totally zero cost to us to have them come out. So they still are, their program does consist of the Connecticut River and other places as well, so you wouldn't expect to see them every day out here. But a day or two a week during high traffic, that's what we're trying to kind of coordinate with each other, to have somebody out there. The reception that I've gotten to the people that we spoke to from CRC and stuff, it's been phenomenal. We still get the complaints, which we always do, and you're going to. But all in all, I think it's had a really good impact and this will just give us a little more, another tool in our bill. That's what I'm hoping to do. They have drafted an MOU from their attorney. I will receive it this afternoon. And with your permission, we're kind of making a couple slight changes and we would forward it to our town council as well, see what kind of input that they would have, and then I would submit it to you for review. So I guess what I'm looking at is just permission to pursue this endeavor. It's.
Russ Fox will link that motion.
Okay. Doug Morgan will second the motion.
All those in favor? Joe Didi, I. Russ Fox, I.
Doug Morgan, I.
Thank you. I'd heard them out there a little bit, I think, the last few weekends.
They're coming now, we're going to have our boat and them as well. There's actually, next link, part of the Rotary Club's concert series is going to be on the water. So they're going to be out for that too, so we'll have them and ourselves as well.
All right. Chief, the final issue is the authorization to renew with the town of West Springfield, the animal control facility usage by now.
Correct. So I spoke with the West Springfield Chief last week and again this morning. He was sending it to their town council for review, just as we're doing here. Between him and I, we feel the way as it reads, there's no need to change anything but the date. I mean, the defined structure's been fine. It's more than supports, you know.
Recovering our costs, there's no need to adjust those.
So there's really nothing that I can see that we would need to change for the next agreement, whatever those terms.
You're free to answer.
Yeah.
You're happy?
Yeah.
Do they have a rooster issue there?
They have chickens.
They have chickens.
They've had, on occasion, they brought them over, yes. We have none at the moment.
But you figured out how to deal with it.
Yeah.
Joe's got a barbecue here.
Yes, I do. That's not for the picnic, no. Yeah, no, so that was, they did bring them in, but they have since flown the coop, is all they say. And that's why the birds up there.
Okay, great. All right, wonderful.
Okay.
You guys are good with that? Yep, Russ Fox will make the motion to approve.
Second.
All right. In favor, Joe Didi, I. Russ Fox, I.
Thank you.
Doug Morgan, I.
And I'll hang around, there's going to be one more issue, I think, if you have some questions on regarding a reserve officer.
Yeah.
So I can, I'll stay.
Want to take that out, wants to cheer, wants to take that out.
Yeah, let's take it.
Okay.
Shouldn't be around, right? And that is where.
Under. Plus we have the liquor here.
Okay, yeah, understand. So the reserve is looking for.
Reserve officer, chapter P, authorize appointment of a reserve officer?
Yes. So with the police reform bill, as you know, things are kind of all over the place of who we can bring in. Kevin Hannah is a resident of Southwood, longtime resident, retired state trooper lieutenant. And he's expressed interest in joining our reserve force. And he falls into the criteria of the time he retired to now that we just need to bring his certifications up to this year's level. And we could include him in our force to help with details and such as kind of what we did for retired Sergeant Day.
Yes, nothing better to do?
Well, I guess, you know, he says, and you know, I'm not sure I'll say the same thing, but after you've been out for a while, you just can't give it up. And he did do, was doing it for Westfield for quite some time and had left, and he just wants to keep his hand in it. So he certainly comes with a lot of expertise.
Yes.
Longtime resident. There would be really very little moving parts to make this happen. So in light of everything that's going on with whom we're able to bring aboard through this reform, it'd probably be a good addition.
And you think the training level will be far less than the bridge training?
Oh, he wouldn't have to do any of it.
240 hours?
He's got to do the 40-hour in-service training that we do as full timers.
Right.
Because he has already, his academy's.
None of those are hours.
None.
That's going to be, that's going to say small, yeah. The problem I see, do reserves have numbers on their badge?
We give them call sign numbers, but not on their badge.
All right, because where does Preservus Bishop fit into this pile?
He's.
And would he be above or below?
He's 361, so Kevin would be 362.
Is that okay?
Yeah, well, yeah, I think he'll have to be.
Just get it out there now. I don't want him whining when he gets called and that is resolved.
Yeah, so I'll make sure I give him a call and make sure, if he's got any input.
Let's face it, they're pissing a model about it.
Yeah, yeah.
I think he'd be a great asset to have. There are still some good state troopers left in this town. So, yeah.
Yes, yes, sir.
Do we need a motion for this?
Russ Fox. Yes, you do.
Make the motion. Make the motion. Stop it as quickly as possible.
Does that require physicals?
No, I don't believe so. Sorry, Lieutenant Banish spoke with.
Whatever the normal.
Academy is, and right now they're working under the same CMRs that we did prior to the reform. A lot of things haven't changed, so for us to bring him aboard, I think we'll look at.
Those other standards. So I'll second Vice Chairman's motion, subject to the yada yada that we normally have.
Correct. All those in favor? Joe Didi, I. Russ Fox, I.
Doug Morgan, I.
Okay, thank you.
You're adding a thousand.
I know, huh? Let's keep it going that way.
We'll see you at budget time. 6:05, CDBG Public Hearing, Erica Johnson, DBDC, Federal FY 2021 CDBG application.
She had to bring the big guns tonight.
Oh, all right. We all have to be on our best behavior.
Hello, this is my son Alex.
Hi, Alex, how are you?
Love the shirt.
Having a full childcare misunderstanding for this evening, so Alex will be joining me.
Doing great.
All right. He certainly has a voice that carries.
We're still working our way to learning how virtual, you know, tunes work with hybrid.
Your acoustics are wonderful. We could, we could both happily sit here and scream.
And the folks at home are cheering Alex on.
Okay.
Everybody have the hand up?
Yes. Yeah, this is a public hearing. Right. I can introduce their agency and their role, and then we'll get into elements of the project.
I got it, I got it. I can get up.
Okay. So it's the 2021 Southwood CDBD application. The Southwood Select Board will conduct a public hearing on August 24th, 2021, at 6:05 PM at Southwood Town Hall, 454 College Highway in Southwood. Obviously, at all, the public is encouraged to attend this hearing to discuss the town's FY 21 application to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development for up to 800,000 available community development block grant funds. All persons with questions or comments regarding this, their grant application will have an opportunity to be heard. Those unable to attend can send written comments to the Southwood Select Board, 455 College Highway, Southwood, Mass., 10077, attention, Carlos Stein. The town is encouraging incentive on community needs and projects which would benefit from fund grants, from grant funding in this and future applications. Practicing the consideration for the current application and through the construction of water, drainage, and street improvements on Bungalow Street. Additionally, projects that provide benefits to town line, including the housing rehabilitation and septic repair program, and service programs, including but not limited to our community food pantry, will be reviewed for inclusion in the grant application.
I need these things now.
Meeting of the 2021 and successful persons who require special accommodations. For the hearing, should contact the town at least one week prior to the hearing date. For further information, contact Erica Johnson at DBDC. All right. I'll make the motion to open the hearing. Second. All those in favor? Joe Didi, I. Russ Fox, I.
Doug Morgan, I.
Good evening. How are you today?
Fantastic, thank you.
So ma'am, this is.
Hello, everyone. My name is Erica Johnson. I work for the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. This is my son Alex, who's here to provide me assistance this evening and entertain your public. I'm here tonight to talk about the community development block grant application. If you're confused, it's because usually I'm here in the winter because these are typically due in March. But this year, because of COVID, they're having us submit them in September, so here I am. So the town is eligible to apply for up to $800,000 in this round and most every round. We, in a previous grant, received funding to do infrastructure design on Bungalow Street. That infrastructure design is now completed and they're to the point of construction. So proposed for this application is phase one of that construction. It had been my hope that we would be able to do all of it, all of it at once, which was a beautiful dream until yesterday when I saw the cost estimate and realized the dream is over. It's going to be a phased project, but that's, that's all right. It'll still get done, it'll just take a little bit longer. And I had an opportunity to speak this morning with both Randy and also Representative from Fosun O'Neil, who's been doing the design effort on this. And we discussed the best, the best option for splitting that project, which is going to be a geographical split. So doing the first half of the road and then the second half of the road. Sometimes, sometimes it makes more sense to do, you know, subsurface first, then come back and do the upper portions. But this time, it really made the most sense to do it, just draw a line and go to the art and do half of it, half of it in the first round and half of it in the second round. So that's where, that's where the bulk of the money in the application would go. Obviously, this is open for discussion, so I put a not to exceed. That's based on approximately where we think the halfway mark would be with that. Additionally, we put out the social service RFP. Additionally, we put out the social service RFP and we had a single. They're not all sticky. Let's try another one. We had one organization send in a proposal, and that was our community food pantry. And there's details about the request in here. And also, I know that there are some people here from the food pantry.
No, I want sticky.
Perhaps they would like to speak. We need some new glue sticks, but that's not included in this budget. We will take care of those on our own, yeah. And finally, there's money in here for the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And our role. And our role will be grant administrator. So as in previous grants, that's, that's full service grant administration, meaning we do everything from the application to the financial management, to the procurement, to the meetings with DHCD, everything in between. That's not hard.
The last question on the Bungalow, the leaves of Bungalow Street. I mean, the board already started that project in previous years.
Correct.
And of course, you've done that on other votes.
Yeah, I think we all knew that wouldn't be done in one shot.
Oh, the dollar must now, because of the.
Because it was just me.
You're always trying to do, well, you're always trying to do housing rehabilitation and social services.
And you will notice that there isn't, there isn't housing in this one. And the reason why there is no housing, there is no housing in this one, is we still have funds available through the FY 19 grant for housing, and we also have funds available through the FY 20 grant. So if there are individuals in the community who are interested in housing rehab, I encourage them to please contact our office because we do have, thank you very much, we do have funding available for the housing still.
Part of that is because of COVID, you know, contractors weren't being allowed to accept people.
COVID certainly slowed down housing rehabilitation, not just in Southwick, but everywhere, everywhere.
Are we doing a good job getting that message out to the public? Are we doing a good job getting that message out to the public?
We could do better.
I mean, are there any ideas from other communities to how we could?
Certainly, certainly, and, and we, we started out with a pretty robust list of, of folks that had expressed interest in the application process. We also had, still had a list from the last time we did housing rehab, which was through the FY sixteen grant. And we contacted all those people thinking, eh, you know, this will take care of this with a few phone calls, and many of them had already had completed the, the work that needed to be done and no longer needed assistance. And we've had, we've had a few ads here and there, but we certainly need to, to increase our, increase our efforts and make it, make it more, more known throughout the town.
Is the application complex, where we need to assist people?
Some people do need, do need assistance with the application, and that's something that we can, we can provide at the office. In a different time, we used to have people come into the office for assistance. We're not doing that right now. We certainly are offering a lot of assistance over the phone and, and through the Zoom too, so we're happy to connect with people that way.
If you could, and this is just a suggestion, if you could put together some sort of pamphlet or information. We could reach out to Southwick Magazine, ask them to do a story on it, and we could ask them to pay them to do a story on it.
Absolutely.
Emphasize it on our website, on the website, our senior center. I'm just trying to think, we could get it out, get the message out there, because if there's funds out there, there's people that need it.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I would, I would also encourage. I would certainly encourage if, if you, as officials of the town, know of someone who may be interested and, and are willing to, to reach out to them, please, Eric, we're always happy to talk to people. Shirley at our office is on the phone most, most days, all day, so she's a wealth of information. I'd be happy to talk to people if they're, if they're interested. Of course.
Then there are good old food pantry. Folks, how you doing back there?
Fine.
Wonderful. Could you introduce yourselves? This is our community food pantry.
I'm Ariel Royal. That's my daughter.
That is my child.
Pantry staff.
Wonderful, thanks for coming. Once or twice. So they're here because for years, I know I've talked about getting on a building and you might be more aware that I can't buy a building, that you could maybe rehab something when you could never really purchase.
Sure.
So we found something.
Yes.
I think they want, we're still having a mind back there. Overall, I think we're all set. We have a, Mr. Steinhardt conducted a, what are we doing now?
Well, the, there was the required building materials assessment and conditions by tie and bond, so we expect to have that before samples were done.
Yep.
So obviously, you would have to have that process was funded by the Selectment and Finance Committee at the end of the year. And that is something that would have to happen, that you were going to, you know.
Even if the building was going to get torn down, we had to do it, so.
Sure.
Right, we had to do most of it, right. So we're, we should be receiving that document in the next couple of weeks.
So a couple of weeks, ladies, before I get you that document. So the thought process is where, or if any of that can tie into, and it's going to need some more, there's, there's no doubt about it. And we're thinking either a hundred or a hundred and fifty, or maybe even two hundred thousand, and we're pulling those numbers out of the sky, of course. So what's your thoughts?
Well, yes, two, two different things. One, I think is important to mention that that was factored into the request that was made in, in here.
Reminds me of a little bishop, anyways.
A little something, that's for sure. I'm happy to leave him here for a while.
No, that's fine.
There's a couple people on Zoom, though, are looking to take.
I feel like, I feel like he brings, he feels, he brings a certain something to the thing. I'm not really going to leave you here.
We're not going to. So this one, this one, Erica, is this more of an operational one for right now?
So this includes, and, and obviously, I don't want to speak, I don't want to speak out of turn, but this includes, so there was, there was, in, in the request that was put in, it was recognized that operational funds as well as. So there was a discussion, there was, in the proposal, it includes both operational expenses, kind of a, you know, I think they'd be happy to have operational expenses. We've done that in the past. But also, if there was room and the board was willing to go higher, that would also include some rehabilitation expenses too.
So would it be the position of the food pantry that whatever could be secured through this grant, you would leverage with other grant funds, some other, other donations or at grants that you're doing to other nonprofits?
You know the other question I have, and I don't know if we've been able to answer, any of the past grant fees that are still available? Can I be used towards that, or no, that has to stay in or whatever?
We would have to, we would have to get permission from the state, but certainly using money, using, yeah, absolutely. That, that would be, I mean, I would start with a simple email and just ask, ask our program person, just kind of test the waters a little bit.
Or if there's anything.
Yeah, I mean, I think certainly it's, certainly it's, it's an allowable, it's an allowable expense. It's not how we put in. They may want some additional information. I didn't bring, I didn't bring the phone because I thought the phone would be too loud and too distracting.
Alex, do you want to sit next to the chief of police?
You should realize clothes socks. Look at her over there. You want to sit? No, all right, so keep quiet.
See yourself on TV.
Yeah, TV.
See yourself.
All right, we have a question from the floor.
Timewise for this grant is.
She was, I don't know.
But when does it get submitted?
I, so the, the grant gets, the grant gets submitted on the tenth of September, and I'm sorry that I laughed, but I laughed because I honestly don't know because everything is so up in the air with COVID that, and, and I've asked when we should expect to, to see funding, and the answer is, we're not sure. So I unfortunately can't answer. In a typical year, we would find out about the success of the grant about six months after we submitted it. So that's, that's the timeline in my mind, but, but really, I, I don't dare guess. I don't dare guess, just because everything has been so thrown off with COVID at the table. Yes, so typically, I think, I, I typically I plan on a year. So typically, when, when we put something in, in March, I expect to know in the summer, and then depending, depending on what the project is, sometimes it's ready to go in the fall, sometimes it's ready to go the following spring.
Yeah, but she's really, because what happens is the agencies that have the staff, half those staffs are working from home now. And the other thing too is they're also having to help administer all these other dollars that came into the state because of all this extra federal money coming in. So they're, they're administering a lot of other, you know, programs and grants to help get that money out the door. So these funds are also federal pastor funds.
No, I've never been through this, so it's just more curious.
Yeah, so it's not going to be the normal process, like everything else.
It's, everything is thrown off, but even, even normal, I feel like it takes forever. Even normal, but the way, the way it feels on a, on a normal, on a normal year, and this is, of course, the, the opposite of, of, the opposite of normal. So we shall see. Another question that I had had for the state recently was, okay, so we're having this, we didn't have a, we didn't have an application back at last March. So the question is, are we going to have one this March? This March, are we going to go to do this again, or is this the new norm? They didn't know yet, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts. There's a lot of questions. Say thank you to Mr. Dini.
Thank you.
From a procedural point of view, from the board, what are you going to be requesting of the board? You guys have done these hearings in years. Yes, in terms of foreclosure and going forward, because you have to submit this by the tenth?
Yes.
Your next meeting is the thirteenth. So you have to be. So what do you need from us here?
So what I need, I need, I need all kinds of things, but no, primarily what I need tonight is a decision around funding. If you've done any quick math, or even if you've done slow math, you will figure out that the numbers, the not to exceed numbers I have here
Yep.
Exceed eight hundred thousand dollars, and the limit, the limit we can put in is for eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, but you, you can, the, the bungalow street number you can follow.
Yeah, the, the number, I feel like, I feel like we have, we have flexibility in, in everything, because we can, we can fine tune, you know, I think when it comes to bungalows, like where, how far does that line go, phase one? So there's, there's certain, there's certainly flexibility there. Same with the food pantry, how, how far does the money go? And, and even with us.
Well, then I'll budget you at zero, if that's the case, if you don't care.
I'm going to leave my kid here.
Then I guess I'm not going to put zero.
You know, he's going to be done with it in a second. Do you have taffy? We need taffy.
I was looking for something that would keep him a little more occupied. The best I could do on short notice.
Thank you.
So I guess you'll adjust those as they be?
Yeah, well, I, I personally would rather, rather have some input about adjustment, because I feel like me adjusting them is a little, a little heavier handed than I like to be.
My opinion, I took a long time to get the food pantry where they're at, and I'd like to see them not build them. That's my opinion. In bungalow, you're going to chop up anyways, and quite honestly, the food pantry is going to be back next year too. So both of them will definitely be back for more funding, there's no doubt about it. But that's my opinion. Mr. Mogul, since you're the numbers guy, you're a court.
I see me in the picture.
No, I think it's, you're going to have some flexibility to adjust the number, and you're right, bungalow is not going to be, it's going to go. And that's, I think, yeah, do your stages however you want. You can move it in and out of the food pantry at the same time. All right, I think you have local funding too, within the year.
I got, Mr. Fox. No, no.
I, I think that, you know, we can probably fix the numbers that way, so I'd be glad to be here for you. I still don't see my, my vehicle anywhere.
Yet.
Okay, you're going to surprise me.
It won't be a surprise. I don't do, I'm not a surprise kind of, kind of person. It won't be a surprise.
All right, kid.
It'll be long, he knows. It'll be a long, well-discussed process, but there is, there is a place for that.
Okay.
Just not in here.
You're still looking for that little van to run along with? Well, I agree, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I have seniors coming to me, especially with this COVID thing. They need rides and.
We're going to, we're going to make it out.
We don't volunteer for the bus, because people don't want to drive a bus.
I wouldn't want to drive a bus. Ah, what am I kidding? I'd love to drive a bus. Sure, absolutely, absolutely. There's a place for that.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
No, but the chairman's right, and the court, our other member, Mr. Mogul, is correct too, that we have a building down there. If, if it is feasible to utilize that building, and I'm sure we're going to have to work with the police department, the fire department because of the traffic issue down there, of getting people in and out of there safely. You know, if we can work all that out, I think that's a great idea, a great reuse for that building. In bungalow, we know it's going to be peaceful, and it's a private road, and I should, and that accepted.
Not accepted, really.
So we can't use town money to do that, so this is a win-win.
Yep, the source of funding is always this, very beneficial for certain road categories, right?
Secondly, the, the transfer station, since it's. I think the road ends at the. Yeah, it's not an accepted road.
I don't know.
It serves, serves.
The road, road to the transfer.
I think you'll find that that can be addressed on that future infrastructure.
We digress. I will make a motion to approve the closing of the year. Recommendation that's been presented tonight during the public hearing of the community block. Does that cover it?
I'm sorry.
Sure. Yes, oh, yeah, 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 yes.
For, in, in the deal, for, for, would these be only provisions for grants? Or are the only ones that be?
I believe these are the only ones, and the way it works, certain funding sits in the block, and then she reaches out to, back in the day, it was people that qualified, but I think they've changed that structure some more. Used to be certain parts of town, around the lakes qualified, this corner of town, that corner of town, but it's been redone. Now we're in a town as a whole somewhat qualifies, and now it comes down to income, whether you qualify. We don't have section eight housing here per se, we don't have the bus stop, we don't, we don't have, we don't have that division like Westwood, West Springfield has that handles a lot of that, we have four. So she comes in.
These were the only ones that qualified?
So these were, these were ones.
She advertised, just solicit for programs and people to submit, and so their program did submit something, and they did an interest. And then what happens is the other types of stuff for housing rehab and all that, those are notices that go out periodically, and then people will submit to their agency to get on the list. So the bank of money sits there, and those people would be income eligible.
But just, like, getting back to the infrastructure projects, so, so yes, we used to be confined to a certain area, and we're still confined because we can only work on projects where we can show within the project area. We have at least fifty one percent of the population being low and moderate income, so we are still, we're still limited to.
You do surveys.
And so we do surveys, so yeah, so if, if you are a resident of Bungalow Street, you more than likely saw me because I was the one that was out there. It was very cold, so thank you for, thank you, everyone, for letting me in and filling out your surveys. So we go out and we survey, so there are still, there's still pretty, pretty limited, limited areas that qualify for the block grant. There's a lot of different grants out there, so I, I feel like, I feel like sometimes I'm a little doom and gloom, but I'm just here talking about block grants. There's lots of other things, but.
So the only one to apply for this block grant was the food pantry?
So how, how bungalow ended up in here is because bungalow Street had been identified years ago as an area of need in the community. So because it was identified as an area of need, we did that income survey, we figured out, we had at least fifty one percent of, of folks out there who were lower moderate income, so we started with the, the engineering portion. Yep, the engineering design portion, so we got, got all that taken care of. That's literally on, on paper now. So, so now that that is completed, we're, we're moving on to the construction. Also, through this last one, we got something similar, the, uh, design funded for North Lake Street. That was another, another, uh, lake, another street that qualified. And yeah, so the, the intention is to kind of concentrate some improvements in that section of town.
Well, this also came up over several hearings that we've had over the past several years. We identified, we've done Veterans Street, we identified Bungalow, North Lake, Summer. All those were identified for several years, so they've been on a kind of list.
They've been on the list.
For a long time.
I have lists and lists and lists.
This is really a follow-up to the last hearing that we held, which was published in the newspaper, and where people came in and gave, gave. which was published in the newspaper, and where people came in and gave, gave, gave their opinions on it. What they'd like to see us for.
And I also want to say that if, if people have, have things that should be on the list, I'm contacted all the time. I know the towns are contacted too. Sometimes I'm contacted by town officials, other times I'm contacted by residents, and every project I've ever worked on has been something that someone else told me about. I don't, you know, I don't live here, I don't know what the needs are, but you do. So that's when I talk about lists and lists, like, I, I literally have lists for every community I, I work with for things that people have suggested, whether it's the food pantry, or whether it's, it's the design on North Lake. They're all things that, that people have reached out and talked to me about.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it 800 each submission here?
Yes. The state. That's the state's limit. So this is funded through the Department of Housing and Community Development, through their community development block grant program. So certain, certain communities like Springfield, because they're big, they get CDBG dollars automatically. Certain communities, because then the rest goes to the state. And then smaller communities like Southwick, uh, that applies to the state for the money that is left over that doesn't go to the larger entitlement communities. Possible. Um, it's, it's held at, it's held at 800 for as long as I've been with the planning commission, so.
Yeah, in the past, the, the, uh, the amounts were higher dollars, but then they lowered them. And then, but I'm not sure, you know, in the future with COVID and all those other funds that are coming, whether or not they'll be increasing the, um, the amounts that they allocate. But as you mentioned, other communities that are large, they just get the money given them directly. Communities like ours are called non-entitlement communities, that we have to apply for them competitively. So some years we get them, some years we don't. There was a year one time where we didn't get something. We got it the year after, and we appealed the first denial, and then we got that one on reverse. So it's just a matter of getting out there and advocating for your community to try to secure these dollars. And your federal tax dollars, you're paying federal taxes. We're just trying to recover this money as we build along. Bring it into our.
What kind of other community-wide projects have, has the book type?
Sure, so there's been a.
And I'm asking for people online too.
Yeah, oh, I'm glad, thank you.
I didn't hear anything about this, so if anyone responds, can you give us enough about it?
Sure. So the big, big projects that, that get funded through here, infrastructure projects, housing projects, and social services. There's some other, other, other small ones. Housing, housing.
Code, like when she talked about low, moderate income households. A lot of people go through and get code enhancements on their homes. Roots, doors, windows, furnaces, whether it's.
Septic, yes.
Privately owned.
This is through this particular grant. We actually, we actually. That would come out of the 800s. So, so yeah, so last year, out of the 800 came, came a piece of it for, for housing. So if, if folks are interested.
Right.
Yes, we've got, we've got money available, so, so yes, thank you. We do, we do have funds available still for that.
The food pantry ban.
The food pantry ban. Yep, the council on aging ban came out of that as well. And then also infrastructure improvements. So I think the last, the last big one that I was involved with was on Veterans Street. Yeah, so yeah, there was, we did the new water line, new drainage, cash basins.
And those are advantageous because they're not accepted ways in the town, so we can't spend our own direct dollars on that, so this is a way to do that and improve those, the utilities and infrastructure.
And one last question, so don't think you're talking about the food pantries, everyone behind the producer.
Correct. No, it's the association, fire, fire, fire association. There's a few back there. The one all the way to the.
We're talking about the few meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
And we don't even know the condition yet of that.
Oh, we do. It's rough.
The question is the how.
It was great up until the new fire department got built, and then slowly they.
And then it moved to crap.
Oh, no, but slowly they stopped using it, and now they have place for meetings inside the new fire department. And I, I think for 10 years I've looked at it, and every time I bring it up, I get the, just don't talk about our building. Okay. And finally, this year and a half or so ago, I brought it up again, and what do you want to do with it? So they moved, it was huge. They have an antique fire truck, they would like park in the back of that. There's that old bayback there of some sorts. So if we do rehab the building, they would like to keep that old fire truck there until they decide to get rid of it. Whether it's not a lifetime or not, I don't know.
And we fill it with food.
Yes, you can fill it with food.
Just.
Sorry, guys.
So in 1965, town meeting allowed for that building to be, you know, built on those, on the parcel. And the language says when they're done with it, they turn it back over to the town. And that's what's happened in the last couple of months. So we got it back. We, we now have to take an active role, and we need to do something.
Yeah, we are gonna tear it down, which we went and had, had everything checked out whether we're going to tear it down or not. I've been looking for the food pantry for years. I've been calling celli months and for years and trying to find something because I can't stand the little house during the cellar. If you've ever helped out over there, other food in the cellar, it doesn't work. That could be ADA compliant rather easily. You know, what we really need is a refrigerated heated warehouse for product, in the end, in an office. They don't need anything fancy, so I think that would work rather well in the center of town. I've already talked to police and fire, they'll figure out the traffic. Everyone's on board with Mr. Fox apparently. And that's fine, and that's, that's, that's how Fox is, I get it. So if, if we can make it work within a next year or two, and we know it's not tomorrow, then I'd love to see that be their new, their new senate operations. You have a fire department with volunteers that would gladly go in the back and help them more. I mean, I just think it works as a package, the senior center right over here, you know. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's in writing too, don't worry about it.
It's all on video.
Well, it's important to recognize, the need.
Which building is that? They rent. They currently rent that building from the church.
Yeah, the need for food pantries is only gonna be more important.
How many do you serve now, ma'am?
So right now, we're, um, registered, we have 500 families registered. They are currently using the kitchen at various sort of different times. Um, almost happening, I don't know if that's what, uh, when it was made. There's a few named last year, 120,000, 120,000 people, two residents, so that one's found. And 86% of that is.
Does that help us being grateful and talented on that field? Does that help you on your end with the grant?
Not with this particular grant, but certainly.
It has in the past.
It has in the past.
Yeah, housing grant has, we need to reach.
It has in the past.
And the reason why I really do South Park and Tom originally is also starting to let me in today is because, uh, we try to, we try to, you know, can address around the school. And so we search for students at the school, and that's why it's testing.
That's, that's pretty, I mean, as far as, as far as grants are concerned, that's pretty, pretty common with other groups that I work with, that their, their, their territory covers a lot more than the grant does. So it's like you, you report on some of their beneficiaries, but really there's all these other, other folks that are, that are still getting assistance, so, yeah.
Any other questions?
All right, I will, I will make a motion to close the hearing.
Second, closing favor, Joe DDI, plus Fox Eye.
Greg Mogul, I.
I'd like to make a motion, authorization of the EBP C to submit the proposed fiscal 21 Southwood Community Development Fund Grant Application to Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development in an amount not to exceed $800,000, as detailed in the public hearing, and to include a construction project on Bungalow Street in funding for our community food pantry. Second, all in favor, Joe DDI, plus Fox Eye.
Greg Mogul, I.
I'd like to make the following motion, Mr. Chairman. Authorization for the chair of the board of selectmen for acting chairs to sign all required forms, documents, authorizations pertaining to the proposed fiscal 21 Southwood Community Development Fund Grant Application. Second, all in favor, Joe DDI, plus Fox Eye.
Greg Mogul, I.
Thank you very much.
Alex, thank you for coming.
Thanks, Alex. Thank you, Alex.
Because I'll leave him. I'll leave him if you want. And I did bring some of those documents for signature. You wanna stay?
No.
Oh, you don't? Okay, but can you start picking up?
Do you want Joe I to do that tomorrow?
Huh?
Maybe you need him now.
No, I don't need him.
Joe I.
Yeah, yeah, I have him coded here, hello, he's back.
You ladies have any other questions? Thanks for coming. Okay, 6:25.
They don't all lie to these men. You can slip it out.
Yep. Thank you, thank you.
Mine is that open, mommy, I closed it.
It's, it's, um, it's open, you need to close it. You usually take intermission now, right? Yes, I do. But thank you. No, we'll take our trash. We'll leave it how we found it. Because two is better than one. This is my, this is my sign-in sheet for everyone who came. All right, you ready to go?
Yep.
Can you carry your backpack?
She got it, I got it, yeah.
Aren't you glad we're going for ice cream after and not before?
Yeah, that was suggested by Doom. It was his own suggestion.
Thank you.
They're gonna love it. They're gonna love it.
Like he said, uh, like, he can come back any, anytime, anytime, I'm happy to drop him off.
Yeah.
Good job, Alex.
Thank you.
Unaccepted public.
It didn't go through all any board subdivision process. And 90% of those streets down there never roll, because they were summer cottage. Therefore, we don't get chapter 90 money for them. We have to file them for safety reasons and maintain them for safety reasons.
But that's, the citizens voted to allow us to file them.
Yeah.
Maintain for different safety things, but any major construction, we can't do the tax, that's.
Okay. All right, next up, attorney, is it Ford?
Pollard.
Pollard, come on up, sir. Reconsideration transfer hearing for the Franklin House.
Attorney Ed Pollard. Pollard, I'd say a good 60% of everybody pronounces it the way you did, so. No, it's quite all right. Do you want the dress now?
At, at the end of the year.
Okay, okay.
You didn't bring a kid with you tonight?
No, I actually feel a little left out, it was not fun. It's nice to have a little breakup in some of the dry meeting stuff sometimes. Sure, sure, yeah, see real life.
Move to YouTube and we'll be watching.
That's right. Uh, again, Attorney Ed Pollard, I'm here on behalf of Kurt Saunders.
All right, I'll read the public notice first.
Yeah, okay.
All right, notice is hereby given under chapter 138 of Massachusetts general laws of the Franklin House LLC as a right to transfer of the on-premise alcohol license at Desmond Inc., 127 Collie, 127 Congamon Road, South Mass. Previously owned by Ernest A. Gerard. Manager on record is Ernest A. Gerard, property description. Building consists of south side of Congamon Road, approximately 500 feet south of the old railroad. One entrance on north side of the building, one patio, one room for storage, two exits in the front. The proposed hearing will accomplish a transfer of said license from Desmond Inc. DBA, the Franklin House, to Franklin House LLC. Approved new manager Kurt A. Saunders, established entertainment license, established and maintains some same serving hours as previous license. Time and date of hearing is August 23rd, 2021 at 6:25 PM in the select board's auditorium located at 454 College Highway, South of Massachusetts. The select board acting as the license commission. Interested party should attend in person, be on a remote meeting platform, or submit written testimony in advance of the hearing to the select board office.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We need a motion.
Now I'll take a motion to open the hearing. Plus Fox, who make the motion to open the hearing.
Second.
All in favor, Joe DDI, plus Fox Eye.
Greg Mogul, I.
I just read the legal ads, or in the staff. Read any papers to be entered in to the record. Do you have any papers to be entered? You have a new name?
Just his application.
That's it? Chief who?
Chief Landis.
It's approximately 50.
I don't know how.
Does that happen to you?
No. Okay, it says to ask for anyone to speak in favor of the transfer of liquor license. Those who should state their name and address.
Guess that would be me. Uh, Attorney Ed Pollard, I do represent Kurt Saunders, who's purchasing. And I first, I'd like to apologize on behalf of Kurt for not being here today. I don't know how many of you know him. He and his wife both have come, come down with breakthrough infections and COVID. His wife is presently on a ventilator in the hospital, and he's there. He has just recovered himself, he's been in quarantine, um, both on behalf of his wife, who they have improvement on, at least no decline in the past few hours, kind of thing. And she, I guess she's more comfortable, and they're hoping to get her more conscious and things like that soon. So things are improving, okay. But on behalf of everybody else here, he didn't think it's appropriate for him to attend anyway, and he really needs to be with his wife right now. So I spoke with him earlier today, and we discussed some things, and I'm hoping I can do justice by answering your questions as need be. Just on behalf of Kurt, just, I'm sure a lot of, everybody, I don't know if everybody knows him, but he's a very well-known local businessperson, born and raised in the area, very active in the community, and he's someone who's very much liked the idea throughout the time that I've known him for 25, 30 years, that, well, even more than that when I was a kid, I know him. Franklin House has been, you know, something on his mind is kind of nostalgic, something like his own family's marina. It's a part of a staple of Southwick, and so the, the idea of owning it and operating has been, you know, it's something he's always kind of taken fondly to the idea of. You know, it's, it's something that is, as I say, a nostalgic landmark in the, in the town, and it kind of coincides with his marina. He has, in, in case anybody wonders, he does have some experience in the operation of restaurant and, and bar. He actually worked part-time down the street at, but it's now Krabby Joe's, for one of the previous owners years ago when he was younger, when he was working at the marina, and he'd work there at night, and helped manage the place. He's also has the liquor license, uh, at, you know, for the package store right next to his marina, so he's not unfamiliar with, uh, you know, the alcohol sales, uh, operation and things, although we realize it's different for onsite versus package store. He tends to run things very, very much the same as they have been. He doesn't really want to change anything, he knows that it's something that's kind of a mark in the community, and he wants to keep the style, the design, the feel of the place. Clean up, you know, and no major overhaul renovations, perhaps, just tidying up type renovations and things. He's not planning on any major expansions or, or any kind of thing like that. He wants to continue the same oper, operation, general hours, et cetera, and license parameters as the current owner. And he's also right now in discussion with at least two restaurant-bar professionals that are, that he's considering for a position to help him with the day-to-day, hands-on, getting through the specifics of, of, you know, hiring and proper placement of, of employees and scheduling and all that. So he's, he's very serious about getting more up-to-date professional people in there to, to, to help him run the place. He wants to be hands-on, uh, he, as you, I'm sure know, he works right in that vicinity all day long, night and day. You know, he does work a lot. He does work a lot, uh, so he's, he's right in with it and, uh, he, he wants to have a very successful relaunch. Um, hopefully, you know, to give somebody through the cold winter months and yet un-return to a place to go out to eat, rather than have to just be outside all the time. Hopefully, uh, COVID will, will allow this to, to happen. Um, and, uh, he has, by the way, he's, uh, he tells me he's been making arrangements already, uh, for the tips training for his staff, which in some cases is, is just additional training for perhaps some of the staff that works in the package store to come across the street. So he's very serious about that. Um, he does intend to be very hands-on and, and I guess suppose above all else, avoid any kind of issues that might transpire from the owning of a bar and restaurant that might badly affect his current business, which is the marina and the package store across the street, which he would do everything in his power to not upset the apple cart in his own businesses by having done something, you know, you know, not up to par with the, the bar and restaurant across the street. So he feels very strongly about that and very motivated to make sure that things are operating the way they are supposed to. And he doesn't want to jeopardize the family legacy and history of his marina, which interesting that I think the year after next is a hundred and eighty years in operation. In his family, a long time, so it's nothing he wants to have a scar on, so he wants to make sure that things operate very well and wants to work with the town. Please, and everybody to make sure things go as smoothly as possible, so. Um, and with that, we, we do request that license for the transfer be approved. Um, he's buying the house that, that sits, or the, the building that, that it sits on and the lot next door that has the, the parking. Um, and, you know, the license along with it and hopefully that, uh, we're hoping and respectfully request that you approve that license transfer.
Thank you. Anyone here to speak against the transfer of license? Anybody on Zoom? See any handles?
I don't see anybody in the chat.
Just say remember. Okay, discussion amongst ourselves regarding the transfer of license. Mr. Fox.
No, I don't have any major issues. I know Kurt, his family, so, and, uh, obviously, uh, business in the town of Southwick and part of the town of Southwick, Valentine, father was a former selectman. Uh, they've been a good operation. I can't remember any issues whatsoever, ever with the package store. Ever, so I, I think it's great. Terry's gonna retire, somebody else is gonna take over and keep Franklin House going.
So I think it's exciting.
Jury and now it'll go to Kurt, so long-term residents will continue to operate.
That's his plan, yeah. That's his planning.
I couldn't say it any more eloquently than the vice chair just did.
I did, uh, stop in and talk to Kurt, um, a couple of weeks ago, thank God.
Right, right, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And though, you're not kidding.
You'd probably have to be in quarantine now.
Same, same scenario back in the day, I guess there was issues in that package store when he did not own it.
Right, right, right.
He took it over, cleaned up any messes that were there.
Sure.
I don't believe our police has had any issues over there at all.
No, um, the only thing I would say regarding when he's feeling better to touch base with me, because the tips compliance for the section fifteen, which is twelve license are different.
Yeah.
So one is for the package stores. Online, it's different. For all the servers, it's actually U F U ten. Under COVID, they maybe did the protocols begin online, you know, quicks. It is different, so.
Okay.
Short of that, uh, you've always had a very, very reputation with them and, uh, yeah, I'd certainly plus to our whole business as well.
And when I unspoke with him, he had mentioned that the parking lot on the left of the business, that another lot that he was looking at getting cleaned up for parking for the marina.
Yes, yes, he, uh, he, uh, that, that would be beneficial for him to be able to do that. It'd be beneficial for everybody, I think.
Yeah.
Um, and to be able to have that right there.
Explain to me the liquor license basically, you know, the house and the.
That's right.
Parking in front, so.
That's right.
Figure that all out, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
And of course, you know, if he owns both businesses, I think it's not going to be a root issue if somebody crossing the line and parking.
They've been on for the last hundred and eighty years, right?
That's right. Kind of astonishing. You can run a business like that in this day and age for that many years.
Anyone else with any questions? If I close the hearing. Let's talk, make a motion closer here.
Second.
Allies in favor, Joe DDI. Press box.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Any more discussion needed?
And, and fine, I'm ready to make a motion to approve.
Second. Allies in favor, Joe DDI. Press box.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very, very much, gentlemen. Yeah, I will. I, I'm, I'm gonna text with him just, as a matter of fact, he was, uh, just now texting with me. I told him I was here, he'd go, and he said, I have a bad, I'm at the hospital, get a bad signal, no bad news, so at the moment, you know, we're, we're stable and, and that's, that's the hope that continues.
Tell him we said hi.
I will, I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, sir, thank you.
Good night.
Hi.
Good night, Chair.
Trade-off. You know, if we were outside in the dark alley, this would look very scary. Thank you. Thanks for your help, Rob, and we'll talk to you later.
You're welcome.
All right, up, up next is acknowledged payroll warrant, two-two oh-four B, dated eight-ten-twenty-one, in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. Acknowledged payroll warrant, two-two oh-four, dated eight-seventeen-twenty-one, in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand, three-hundred-four dollars and one penny. Acknowledged special warrant, special payroll warrant, two-two oh-five, dated eight-nineteen-twenty-one, in the amount of two-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. Acknowledged payroll warrant, two-two oh-five B, dated eight-twenty-four, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of seven-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand, fifty-five dollars and fifty-three cents. Carl, could you break down some of the bigger ones for me real quick?
Oh, Joe, yeah, that big one, um, well, obviously, warrants every week. You're either paying people or you're paying your bills. And they all come from the, um, budget that's adopted through town meeting. But in terms of that last large one, firefighting and equipment operations, twelve thousand, drainage construction work, twenty-seven thousand. Paying town utility bills for all the buildings, um, air conditioning needs and lighting was thirty-one thousand, solid waste fees, ten thousand. Paving, three-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand in paving. Sewer flow effluent that we collect in our sewer system that gets pumped and goes to the wastewater treatment plant. And Westfield is metered at the border and where we pay those bills quarterly, so that's sixty-four thousand. Uh, funds owed for USDA debt service for the sewer project, twenty-seven thousand. Community development block grant transfer money for a program that she's working on, an earlier grant, eighteen thousand. And then health insurance premiums being transferred to the, our cooperative bid, uh, trust is eighty thousand, so that's six-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, all the seven, so whatever's small.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman?
Appreciate that. Minutes, open session dated eight-nine-twenty-twenty-one. Press box to make a motion to approve.
Doug Mogan will second.
Allies in favor, Joe DDI. Press box.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Executive sessions dated eight-nine-twenty-twenty-one. Press box to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Allies in favor, Joe DDI. Press box.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Okay. Establish master plan subcommittee.
Composition.
Composition, thanks. Per chapter, M G L, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one D. So we got a letter from, something's gone wrong here.
That was from me asking you to add to the agenda. Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. Can we add, can we add that?
Sure.
That's fifteen, it only consists of. Okay. Mr. authority would, would you kindly add to the next level of agenda for them, as he did? All right, so what are your thoughts on this?
Well, under the, um, what is it, chapter forty, whatever, whatever chapter, master general.
Chapter forty-one, section eighty-one D.
That was in the eighty-one, there you go. Eighty-one, uh, town of Southwick adopted in nineteen thirty-eight at the Southwick Town Meeting. And to, uh, for Ronald Reagan, Carl Seinhardt was not at that meeting. To establish the planning, this is the minutes of the town meeting.
In nineteen thirty-eight?
Beautiful penmanship, by the way, a lost art, really. If anyone wants to see, I'd be glad to share, but, um.
That's when town meeting created the planning board.
Created a planning board.
Late thirty-eight.
Correct. And then the master plan subsection of the bylaw is provided for under towns that have a planning board. So this is establishing that we have a planning board legally established and that the master plan, uh, committee can be established. A master plan can be put together by a planning board, by a town that has a planning board, so that's the legal basis to have it. And so the planning board is requesting to form a sub in order to produce the work product, which would be a master plan. And, and then potentially work on, uh, zoning legislation that would come from that, that would go in front of town meeting or adoption, which usually that's how certain parts of zoning come about. Flexible residential subdivisions, for example, came out of master plan activities in the, in the late eighties, early nineties, and then was adopted by town meeting. So, but it is the purview of the board of selectmen to actually charter us up, so that's the ask in front of you right now.
Yes, thank you.
And the planning board is already advertised among those.
Yep, but they, they, they got a little lot in front, but they got a big job to do, so, but technical to, tech, the technical process to establish this up is a vote of this board. And then they, I was at that meeting and I did take some notes. I think I captured it right, except for number fifteen. That's why I have a question mark, is that is their composition of the, of the sub as they see it. So there'd be one member of the board of selectmen, two members of the planning board, economic development, county comm, D P W, school, or school committee, C P C, and or lake management, a business owner, and then one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, five members of the public, and then potentially a member of the water commission. And the sewer commission is represented by the board of selectmen already, because we are near the, near the sewer sub. So that's, that's how they live.
Only I don't see is police and fire, but I don't think there's really info.
Well, they, they, they talked about that as, there's, there's opportunity for, just because they're somewhat on the sub, doesn't mean they can't take an active role in presenting or, or, or coming to the board and, and presenting, just like anyone else.
Fair enough, right, right, right. Still a little bit of supply information.
Correct.
Still a little bit of public.
Oh, absolutely. Their meetings would have a secretary in minutes and open to the public and subject the open meeting law.
Open meeting law, they're gonna be a subject to all the laws we want.
Yeah, okay. Members would have to be sworn in.
And that's a large forum, too.
Yeah, yeah.
There were a couple that aren't on the list, I'm a little curious about. One of them was parking wreck, one of them was historical, and I think one was major, I mean, it's agriculture. This is still a farming community, and you have the right to farm, but I think it'd be important that, that there be someone from the ag community out there.
But you're kept at fifteen, right? The max is fifteen.
Like, that was their, their take on it, and as far as, Carl brings up a valid point. If you get to a twenty-member sub, you gotta have eleven people to conduct your meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying.
I, I get it. You want to be careful about the line. One can become unwarranted.
No, understood.
I'm not asking about adding.
Just saying they're not there.
Right, they're not there.
Sure, what the hell?
I was at that meeting, your question about adding, they have the preservation commission, and they have cross-over members, so that they could cover that.
Oh, four, oh, four, oh, four. But, yeah, understood. Same with, you know, police and fire, you could have someone from the public that could be on the police and fire.
And they said they would.
You don't know.
Consultants around there.
Well, consultants, I read. Okay. Stay clear of consultants. That's just like being a jerk. Okay. So what do we, do we want to adopt this as we see it?
I think that we'll discuss that.
Okay.
Again, I, I really think that this would be agricultural, should be represented on this, uh, clearly for.
I think historical should be. But they felt they were all the numbers? And wouldn't have any interview, but they've been here all their lives, so.
Well, you know, I agree with historical, but we can't keep anyone on a damn board at the Gember. So who would you put on from historical that would still be there if this happens? I, I mean, it's unfortunate, right? Then we have a resignation here from historical.
Lee Gember.
Oh, yeah, Lee, that's our dealing.
You're right, you're right, absolutely.
We have four members, and I had somebody call me, ask to be the fifth one.
Great.
Yeah, so they'll be up to a full board.
Wonderful.
But I, I.
I hear you, where you want to put them.
Well, I, I think you gotta have the board of selectmen, I think you have to have the planning board.
I agree. So you take, you take away from the public, it's one, two, three, four, five. No, that's how they report.
Hello? Marcus Phelps, here.
Hello.
I speak.
Oh, I feel like it's a ghost in the room.
There's a ghost in the room.
Marcus Phelps, Vice Chairman of the Planning Board. We had quite a bit of discussion and didn't get into a lot of specifics, of course, as to names. I think the key thing is we need authorization for a fifteen-member subcommittee. And we're going to, at our September seventh meeting, look over any people who have submitted an interest in being on the subcommittee. The due date is September first on the, uh, letters of interest being submitted, so we're certainly gonna try to get a geographic distribution around the town as far as the five public members. And, uh, we'd look at other boards, commissions, whatever, that maybe should be included if, if we put a new, or if we add one, we've got to drop one. So that would be, you know, how we would try to discuss it on September seventh.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, if you, for so poor a selectman, Mr. Fox, if I put you on there, you could also be the business owner, so that would free up a spot. I mean, I don't know, just, you know, like you said, it's fifteen spots, and how do you, and how do you chop it up?
Well, one suggestion would be. One, one suggestion would be, because I think there actually lies a question as, as the appointing authority to create this up, I think we actually have to make the appointment. I'm not sure, but rather than go through the, the hassle of paying attorneys to figure that out, why don't we schedule on the next meeting, a joint meeting with the planning board, this board, to hammer that out and then get it done.
Okay.
And that might, would that be beneficial?
Right.
You know, because then you could, you could resolve it amongst ourselves.
Instead of going back and forth.
And, and amicably, and then.
No challenge.
Correct.
Right. Okay, so let's, let's, uh, are we jumping to the meeting together with the planning?
Yeah, we can come in on your agenda in the third.
And when will they meet again? September seventh?
Seventh.
Seventh, okay. I'll have to put it off of you. Okay, let's do that. Authorized chairperson to sign federal F Y twenty C D F program agreement, seventy-five thousand, with our community food pantry.
It's from last year's grant. They've just finally entered into this process of.
Understood. Press box to make that motion.
Doug Mogan will second the motion.
Allies in favor, Joe DDI. Press box.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Town hall roof design award and signed contract authorization votes.
Yeah, this would be authorizing the chairperson to award the, uh, the design to the best-ranked firm in descending order and for the select board to execute the contract. We've got six vendors have, um, submitted, four of them were, uh, considered for interviews, three were done. We finished another one today and we're just, uh, doing another one tomorrow at eight-thirty because of the storm. So we have a committee made up of the building officials, myself, fire and rail, planning commissioner, and the facilities people, and our acting buildings and brands, so the chairman, the, uh, authorized to go to the, the hand of the recommendation. So the Chairman, the authorized to go to the hand of the recommendation. That committee comes.
Most of the applications are coming in within budget?
This is, it's all within the dollar.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, the, the, the town meeting authorization is not to exceed eighty-five thousand.
Okay.
You know what I was getting at?
Oh, yeah, no, no, there's.
It's general.
Yeah, no, what happens through this process, it's not the number. This process is who it's going to be, because it's an R P. And so, and then of course, if we needed any other funds later on in the process, Erica's got some funds that are set aside for us, so we can use for the building condition study.
Right. Okay. And this is to, this is a design?
Design permitting of Town Hall Roof Repairment and H E A C, H B A C, the present. Yep, it's within the eighty-five.
Oh, yeah, I'm with you.
All right, so. But that's something we already did at town meeting.
Oh, I know, I know.
I will make the motion, because you've got leaks.
So I approve the Chair, add that authorization.
I will second the motion for the Carl Steinhardt Memorial Roof.
And for the Board to sign off on the contract when that part of it happens.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Oh, that's right, Russ has got the one for the Rex Center, that's going to be named after him.
How are you voting?
Aye, thank you.
Oh, this is what's in the red circle. We got in a, well, yeah, you had mentioned it, but yeah, thanks a lot.
How's the fundraising?
Mr. Walsh gave you information. That's awesome. He's still making things happen. Except a hundred-dollar donation to Southfield Police Department K-9 gift account from the Burger family.
Rust Fox will make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI, Rust Fox, huh?
Doug Mogul, aye.
The Lieutenant Officer? That's all. Authorized Chairman to sign Letter of Understanding with K Stumsky for Channel Fifteen Operations.
Right, Joe and I get met with Ken, he, he works with Peter Cobbles.
Yes, he does.
So this is to get our Channel Fifteen process back on track. And he possesses the skill set of having worked with Peter on the head channel up in West End. And you have the scope of services and everything, but again, we'll end up having to.
On the local services.
Apparently.
Rust Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mogul will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Rust Fox, huh?
Doug Mogul, aye.
Okay. Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, snow plow rates.
Right, Randy has another commitment tonight. He did not know we were going to be holding a meeting on Tuesday. So this is what we had discussed in the past about the need to revisit the rates to reflect increased costs of the vendors to do snow and ice removal and to be comparable with other communities.
Yeah. I, I just saw it too.
Right here.
I met with Mr. Brown and Chris over this. Apparently there's been some, some discussion again about our rates and if we would look at this. Apparently there's this whole, I plow quietly for myself, as you do your harm. We don't hit these plow rates. But apparently the insurance company has been wise over the last five or six or seven years. And I would say, plow rate is your insurance and you're plowing your truck and you fly. It's a whole different package versus me and you with our insurance.
Right.
So they brought this forward again and they're looking to see if we could do any adjustment on the rates to help with that issue. And of course, the guys with the five or six trucks, you know, are having a bigger issue than the guy with one truck or bicycle horse, like the guy with one truck is paying just as much as the guy with seven trucks.
Right.
So they would like us to take another look at this and see if there's anything we would like to do as far as bumping it up a couple of hours or what you really see fit this time. And it looks like our normal rate right now is, let's see, Southwick is eighty-five an hour for a three-quarter tonne down and we're ninety an hour for a one-tonne larger. So around the communities that are a hundred and a hundred and fifty, which is West Side, Agewell is at ninety-eight and a hundred and five. So I think if you're south.
It's comparable to those with the chair.
Yeah. And I think you look at Agewell, they're more or less. I think it's gotten better out there, Mr. Fox, did you say with the bally?
I think it's, it's gotten better. I think we have some good people that have been doing it quite a while now. You know, our biggest problem that, that we, was conditions of the rugs, the worst condition of rugs, the worst plowing town is, right, it's, that's, it's that simple. You know, they can't scrape a rug, it's all be on.
Yeah.
But I think in general, between our hired equipment and our staff, they do one heck of a good job.
Last winter, they did a good job and we can anticipate another snow and ice and frozen rain pattern all again this next winter.
And I think as a town, we've come a long way in the last two years, too. I mean, now it's kind of zoned out. We, we as Selectmen know who is a neat song. You know, we're, we're, we're holding them more accountable than we ever have.
Right.
Which is, which is fine, and I think it's worked, you know? I mean, we all now know who calls what streets and if there's an issue, on top of it, we don't hear about it three days later at a Selectman's meeting, you know, and Chris and Randy have both kind of, I don't want to say stepped up, but they've been able to communicate much better when it comes to that mess. And they've done a great job, so.
Right, so we want to keep these offender team in place.
Yeah.
Well, because they'll just go to another community.
Well, that plus they know the reason we've been lucky to keep them on the same roads.
Yep.
And that's the key, right? They know where to put the snow, not put the snow in the hills and the masses. So any ideas of?
Well, Randy's looking or making recommendation of a ten-dollar-per-hour wage for the coming winter.
It hasn't gone up in a number of years.
Yeah. You see the price of fuel.
They're getting hammered on fuel and they're getting hammered on insurance and pretty soon, I mean, let's face it, I know guys last year that invested heavily, didn't make a cent, three or four years. All you need is one good breakdown. So I, I'd make a motion to support the recommendation of DPW.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Rust Fox, huh?
Doug Mogul, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Authorized Chairperson to sign FY nineteen C D B G Grant Extension Waiver Request.
Right, what that was, Mr. Chairman, was when Erica had earlier talked about the housing rehab and how some of that stuff had to be put on hold.
Yes.
And now they're going back to it. So that extension waiver request had to be signed by you so that she could submit that and have that on record so that when we submit the September tenth grant application that you just voted tonight for federal fiscal year twenties money.
Yeah.
That they'll be able to take that into consideration and not hold that against us in their evaluation of our grant application.
All right, so do we need a motion for the Chairman to sign?
Yep.
Rust Fox will make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Rust Fox, huh?
Doug Mogul, aye.
We only have new business next, correct? End of summer picnic and get-together. What are your thoughts?
Well, after a year of COVID, I think it'd be a great idea. I think we missed out a few events, you know, staff, different boards. So I think it'd be a great idea. And I'd recommend we put Rob in charge of it, she did such a bang, bang and job the last time.
Second.
Well, Joe did that some.
Look, Joe's without saying that Joe's already roped into this pretty deep.
I will help, I help.
We, we do it outdoors like we did last year, that was awesome.
You would have to.
Yeah, we have to work around the big E schedule, that's the big thing.
There's a lot of big things. Yeah, we were to do it, it'd have to be after the big E. It could be the Wednesday after.
Okay.
Also get to stay close with the beginning of the big E.
Right.
So we're still before.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. We talked about the member vacancy, do we have, did we make a motion to post for that?
Yes, you did, you made that motion and we're going to officially let them know and then email them and let them go ahead and post it. We would like to be doing the joint interviews in September, was your thoughts?
Yes. Approve a one-door outdoor entertainment license for Southwick Village on the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary parade day. Right? Sixteenth?
No.
That's September sixteenth.
Thank you. All right, rain date is the thirtieth. Do they need a permit for outdoor entertainment?
I don't think they asked for one.
All right, I need a motion for the folks.
I, I take it Southwick Village is the cognitist?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll, I'll make that motion.
Maybe this is a pre-game for your parade. Just doing it a month per second.
I, yes, okay, all those in favor, Joe DDI.
Rust Fox, huh?
Doug Mogul, aye.
I actually had the honor to visit them there the other day and, yeah, they're excited about that. They're going to have five hundred people on the phone on and it was interesting. Everybody seems to have smiles on their faces down there, so that was good. The LPP fines.
Yep, that's the thing that you.
They're not going to fine. I mean, I'm glad they sent the letter one way because it woke some people up, but I'm also disappointed that we should have had a conversation before that.
I think they can also, want to talk to the.
Well, I think Dennis hit the nail on the head, he wouldn't have recommended it.
Well, I read those emails and it didn't sound that way.
No, came from another board committee.
Yeah.
We should also look at when, when we have that ad hoc committee is find out if there's a better way to do the signings, right? Like right now, you got to literally print out a form and mail it in and.
Right.
Maybe there's a better way to do that.
Maybe they should just send paperwork to Southfield and people could go to their Town Hall there.
That's what I was thinking.
Fill it all out and submit it for each of the homeowners there, just like they pay in for them anyway.
Yeah, sure. That's also a good idea. There you go.
Well, that's.
Also a good idea. It's all good, there you go.
At least in that neighborhood.
Yes. Discuss meeting dates in October through January.
Yeah, we need to start thinking about your schedule because this issue is related to the, you know, advertising for hearings and things of that nature.
Yeah. Do you have a calendar for that? Yep, I should have got these phones.
October. The eleventh is Columbus, right? So we can't meet on that day, so we'd meet the fourth, the eighteenth, the twenty-fifth, October.
We usually go every week after the big E.
And then in November, you have.
I shouldn't say that later in the.
Probably just after.
Probably every week, during the big E, every week, I mean.
Not really.
Every, okay.
It's still every year.
Okay, so I thought I was after that, that we looked at every week.
So November.
Does that make sense?
So October, are we in agree, is that fine?
September, you have a meeting September twenty-seventh. So what do you want to do in terms of going into?
October. October.
October fourth, then you can't legally meet on the eleventh, so it'd be the eighteenth and the twenty-seventh.
Is it the eleventh or is it the eighteenth the holiday is?
So is the eleventh.
Eleven.
Yeah, it is the eleventh, yeah. Because the sixteenth is the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
All right.
So the November.
November, you got the first, the eighth, the fifteenth. And we normally don't meet the week of Thanksgiving, so you skip the twenty-second and meet on the twenty-ninth. And then December, you have the sixth, the thirteenth.
Usually you do meet the twentieth because you have a function right after your meeting with the association and then you wouldn't meet in between Christmas and New Year's.
Correct. Agreeable with that, though? And we could reduce it just if somebody has a conflict.
Are you okay with Mondays?
Is that going to be an issue for you, Joe, with the, the winter operations?
No, not in the morning, it should be fine. What was the need here? Sorry, Tuesdays or Mondays?
We moved back to Monday, so it's fine.
And I will be out probably the first two weeks of November, or maybe I can zoom and we'll see on that coast.
There you go.
Yeah.
When does that legislation expire?
The next day.
Right.
All right, so we'll do, Rob and I will put together drafting for the next meeting.
Anything else on the new business that I missed? Do we have, do you have any new business?
Well, we had, obviously with what we thought was going to be Hurricane Henri, Mr. Didi and I chaired a meeting with the Public Safety and Public Works and Emergency Management people on Saturday.
Don't go on too long, that could have been a five-minute meeting, just saying, it's all good, I'll take the. I learned a lot.
So anyway, we chaired a meeting and we made sure that we heard from everybody about what, you know, storm. Preparations were underway and how response was going to be done with the different staffing levels and vendors and debris management and all that. You know, we were kind of fortunate because of the track the storm took.
Yeah.
You know, it ended up going further west than us and I think last night was probably worse than the other days. But anyway, we did go through that exercise and we were ready and, you know, this time we had both chippers, because we have two of them now and we had been supposedly, yeah, put in another place.
They were.
Not near the water bodies.
Yeah.
And we were ready to go, we were going to need those.
I think the communication was much better. We knew fire had three crews that could use chainsaws.
Right.
You know, we brought in dispatch early and we actually brought in two D D W early.
Which they would need because they were going to clean up roads.
Yeah, that half-hour wall between.
Well, if you listen to the scanner, the police were out there.
Everyone did a great job.
They were out there moving debris out of roadways, you know, very easily that they could and then other things, they had to just put horses there and move on to other locations and the Public Works guys were coming along. Sorry to interrupt, but we're fortunate. We also had made plans for a significant amount of public utility truck staging. So, and we also extended invitations for them to come into our E O C center like we did on the ten-twenty-nine eleven. And we were getting ready to, if we needed to, we would have repurposed a number of the administrative staff and support staff and given them new roles. But we were ready and I told them, you know, look at this, the storm season is not over. We very well could be ending up using this type of a, of a group configuration between now all the way through to the end of October.
Two thousand and eleven storm, we learned a lot from that. You know, and we're better to be prepared than not to be prepared. And that's the reason why we went ahead and got that extra chiper, you know, so we have that, you know, you know, bringing the people, you know.
All the generators were fueled and ready to go, everything was ready. Well, Joe and I, everybody did a good job with coming to the meeting and participating on a Saturday morning when the sun was shining.
Anything else from the business?
Last Friday, I attended the Police Academy graduation.
Yes.
For our new police officer, Mr. Olson. So, and he is starting Thursday, and he'll be starting his field training officer regiment with different people, I think he's going to be starting on a very, number of months. It's good to have him on board and that, that is the net replacement for Kevin's departure. That's the new net bond.
Yes.
So and then of course, you just put another reserve on tonight, so that's. It's good to see Matt Apophis, it was a very good acknowledge.
Well, you watched it all the way through, right, from the clerk's office helping out, right?
Great training for a person who's going to. Great training for a person who's going to become a police...
Even interned with the police when he was in high school, right? Oh, yeah, he's really gone through the whole thing.
Yeah, and their staff was at the...
I saw that.
Yeah, their staff was there. So there was a good, a good turn off himself.
All right, old business. I have select board update on meeting with DOT regarding the construction of the bridge on Westfield.
Well, we did get some headway, they came out and started cleaning away the gardens.
Okay.
So they did begin that process, and the site visibility has improved. So hopefully, they're going to continue. Randy mentioned that it'd be nice if they did all the gardeners, and we should have been done.
Yeah.
They don't believe in using herbicides, like our neighbors to the south, because they have to advertise.
The question needs certain licenses to apply.
I know, but our neighbors to the south had no problem doing that. But at least they came out to Southwick, which is a plus, so I appreciate that.
That is nice. Southwick Herald's Iron Horse Road Name Changes.
Yep, that hearing that's being advertised this week, and the police will be delivering the letters. We'll be mailing some of them, and that is marked up as an agenda item, 13th of September, our townhouse will be with them.
Green Energy Program and Town Fuel Efficient Vehicles.
Yep, I just got the, this afternoon, we just got an updated draft of the policy, so that'll...
Medical burden vacancy.
Bones. Give me any phone calls back, so I think we're going to have to try a new approach.
Should have left a phone line.
Or was it an A G O?
Oh, it wasn't, no, that's true, sorry, I got some... Appointments for town boards and committees?
I believe you're going to, you're waiting for something from the town clerk's office on the onboarding program, and that's coming in September?
Wonderful. Select board goals and objectives.
We did that last week, if you want to...
Take that off.
Yep.
And the one-day...
I believe you have it added, you have it updated.
Yeah. One-day licorations for rods and mods, classic car show, did we get the updated paperwork?
Yep, it's in your folder, you wanted to have a floor plan of a layout.
Yeah. Yeah, I seen it. So I'm going to vote on this, but I'm also listed on there, and you're one of our people that can vote, so...
My only question is... All right, it's a public park, and whenever we do it, it's a, the alcohol-serving area is fenced off, and that's where you consume the alcohol, it's just kids.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, but I'm a little leery of what's going on here. I don't know whether we're incorporating, you go in there and then come through the tent and go out, or, you know, could we just, I'll make a motion to approve this, but could we have...
I will...
Chief Landis, who's going to continue being in charge of litter.
Did this come from Chief Landis?
No.
Who did it come from?
This was, we asked for a...
No, I know, but who supplied this?
He met with Chief Landis.
Okay, so they, so Chief Landis is, so we just need his sign off on this.
Right, but to make sure it's clear that alcohol will be consumed in the Enstein area home. That's all, that's all, I'm not trying to make a big deal out of this, but there's kids, it's a park.
Yeah, understood. I will second that motion. All those in favor?
Russ Fox, aye.
Joe DDI.
Doug Mowgli, aye.
I mean, we don't...
I did not.
No.
There's no need.
You just get to the point where...
It's a one-day liquor license for...
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll go on the record, before anybody indicts me for something, you know, I work at Wally Computer, which is owned by John Wally. John Wally's donated the park.
Donated the park, and is part of the car show.
And is somehow running a car show as a charity benefit for breast cancer and the One Call Away Commission.
Correct. Why don't we do selling ice cream, because I can't carry them to work in the back there?
I mean, if you want to...
The line will be long with the people complaining about everything I've done to them. I'll be there to listen. Okay. Library trustee vacancy.
Yeah, we sent notification to the papers and the chairs of both political parties and other entities that are involved in supplying potential candidates. And I believe Mike was going to be also talking to us.
Yeah, I could talk to them today, even if it's low for the parade, but we didn't mean that. Anything else for old business?
No.
We have a bit of accessory?
Uh, no.
Okay, so we're done. All right, then I guess I need a motion to adjourn.
Russ Fox will make the motion to adjourn.
Is that the second time motion?
I'm thinking about it, I see that.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor? Joe DDI.
Russ Fox.
Doug Mowgli, aye.
All right, folks, that would be the meeting, and we'll see you in a...
Good night.